Okay.
Just a reminder that public comments are limited to three minutes. When you are recognized, please stand, state your name, and then address the board in a professional manner. The commissioners may not respond to your comments during this meeting, whether they may take your comments and suggestions under advisement, and your questions will be directed to the appropriate person or department for follow-up. For consent items, do I have approval of the agenda?
I gotta see if we have any public comments.
Okay.
Do you need to be muted? Public comment?
Um, I just have one. Are we going to be discussing the temporary moratorium tonight? No, that's done. That's gone. And that's up for a planning commission and all.
No, that's the board.
Okay, 'cause um, I think I have a realtor that called you Sasha.
Yes.
And you said it would be discussed at tonight's meeting.
Last night's meeting.
Last night. Okay, he misunderstood.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Yes.
So.
Can we put the man on there?
No, not on this meeting, but we have to.
We can talk later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was repelled, just saying.
Okay.
Repeal.
Thank you.
We can, we can go on.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, so. Alright, consent items, approval of agenda.
I move we approve this agenda.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor say aye. The agenda's been approved. Then approval of the minutes.
So. Motion second.
Motion second. So we're looking to approval of minutes for both the June eighteenth, twenty twenty five meeting and the July second, twenty twenty five meeting. We can take those as two separate items. Do I have a motion to approve the minute from the June fifteenth, twenty twenty five meeting?
Does it move?
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second, Beth.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the meeting for June eighteenth, twenty twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so meeting minutes for June eighteenth, twenty twenty five have been approved. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July second, twenty twenty five?
My motion.
Alright, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor approving the minutes for the meeting for July second, twenty twenty five, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, that has been approved. Alright. So, well, we'll go into old business. It's amending Article fourteen, if I remember my Romanians correctly. Sign code regarding temporary signs, temporary banners, and feather banners.
So, um, Madam Jefferson, I, like I said, I took all the comments that you individually emailed me, and I've tried to put them in a coherent group bay. Um, so each one of you that touched on a certain issue, um, I put them together. Um, and then, like I said, um, Suzie from Code Enforcement is on, and she put together that little packet for you to look at.
I want to say put together.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, she's here, um, maybe we could let her go first.
Yes, please.
Okay, and then, um, go from there.
Okay.
Alright, Suzie, you were on.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm, uh, not at the meeting. I wish I could be there in person. I prefer to be in these meetings in person, but just for some medical reasons, I can't. Um, I'm not here to do necessarily a presentation or anything like that for you. However, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about signs, particularly temporary signs, and how to address them. A lot of emotion involved, a lot of, you know, uh, changes that may need to be made, but we have to be careful in how you go about doing that. And know that I don't have a vested interest either way. I'm here as a neutral party. I'm just here to help you make sure you kind of stay on track with the legal issues, the practical enforcement of it, um, unintended consequences that may come from making changes. And, uh, my professional opinion, honestly, just doing this for thirty-five plus years, so, um, I will go over, do you want me just to go over this packet a little bit with you? Because it, it kind of, based on what I've um, been told and have observed, I kind of put together almost a, an outline of what, um, I believe you all have been discussing, and it's nothing in stone. It's just a draft. It's just ideas, um, but there are some things in there that you really have to take into consideration when you're making changes to your code or modifying anything like that. Um, do you want me just to kind of go over it with you at first?
Sure.
Okay. So, I put together what looks like an ordinance, and it's really just to kind of keep us on track and to keep everybody focused, really. Um, but the first things you really need to consider are in section one, uh, one through five. Uh, you can read those to yourselves if you want. If you want me to read them out loud for the record, or anybody else who's in the audience, I'm happy to do that. Do you want me to read them out loud?
No, give us just a quick second to read through them.
Sure.
Sasha?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Is that by chance with the agenda packet?
Uh, yes, if you go, if you go onto the town's website.
Suzie's thing is that we just got.
I uploaded it in there. Yeah, so if you, yeah, if you go onto the website.
Okay, I'll go over there and get it. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Yeah. Took me a second, but I was like, wow! So yes, it's down there on the civic list. I had to remember.
Alright, does anybody have questions for, in regards to that first section?
No.
No.
Okay, so I think that section one, general principles, nice definitions outline. Do you have a question?
Not a question, but just to, if we're gonna kind of go off of this, the number four is permanent fixtures. And should we, that's it, permanent signs? Because on the, in the definition, it says permanent sign.
Okay.
Just more of a typo.
Yeah. Okay.
Sure. Oh, okay, you heard her. Okay.
Got it.
Okay, then we have section two, which is definitions, which I'll probably just let you read that again here real quick.
Okay, Julian. The very first one. This one, I'll save them.
You gotta take the packet apart, and she may not have it, because Sasha just gave it to.
No. No. I gave them Tammy and Terry's.
Yeah, it should, it should be in there. Yeah, it should be at the, in the back.
Okay.
It looks like this.
Does it have a page number on it?
No.
They mind it. Mine are all numbered.
Oh.
Who knows, I find it. Okay, thank you. That's such a, okay, thank you.
Yes, they're in section two now.
There's something of us.
Alright, any questions in regards to definitions or comments?
Sort of. We talked, I mean, feather banners has always been a discussion point, and here it looks like it's temporary.
By definition, a banner, a feather banner, a pennant, maybe those things listed in there by definition are temporary signs.
Correct.
What are we intending to, I mean, like, are we discussing this right now, or just kind of going through definitions?
Well, no, we can, uh, this is here, we can discuss number one, two, three, four, five, if you guys are good with the first few. However you want to do this, it's completely up to you. Might as well go in order, and, yeah, go ahead.
And just so you know, this is just an outline for you guys, so we have some sort of outline for discussion. And this is drawn off of the discussions during the workshop. Suzie's work over forty years as a code enforcement officer, and what other municipalities have used.
And I'm only wondering if this is different than what we had kind of talked about. That's my question on the feather banner.
Well, as it relates to wanting to refer to it as a permanent sign.
Exactly.
You cannot put that in a definition for that, and she'll explain that to you, and that's what she's gonna try to walk you.
Okay, then I'm good.
Feather banners should not be considered permanent.
No, no, but we were talking about it more on, more that businesses would put them up on a, more than a temporary basis. Sorry, I'm good.
So we're good in section two?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so section three, let's go ahead and we can kind of read through that.
Yeah, this is, this is where it gets a little more, um, specific for Kiowa. So, the first two, the first two sections are very general. That's what most communities use. That's what's often used across the country. You want consistency when it comes to this kind of stuff, even across the state, the county, everywhere. So, because people have, they have definitions in their own head about what these things mean, and this is, this is, um, very widespread definitions. But we get into section three, which is the business signs, and this gets a little more specific for your town. Um, so eligibility for a temporary sign would mean who, who can put them up. And the first, the, the three bullets would be those who can, which would be a business located within the town. Um, it can also be placed by, and again, these are, these are just suggestions, so if you don't want them, it's up to you. Uh, that, they can also be placed by businesses operating temporarily in town who have obtained an approved business license and permit if necessary. So, um, those would be contractors, roofers, painters, uh, people like that who often put signs up in yards. They're not supposed to be putting them on the poles and things like that, but they do put them up in yards. Sometimes we see them in your right-of-way, um, those types of things. And, and with those types of signs, what ends up happening is homeowners are often offered a discount of some kind if they display that contractor's sign in their yard. One thing that you can do is you can limit the amount of time those can stay in the yard if you'd like. I didn't put that in here. I don't think that's where we're going tonight necessarily. Um, but it's just a thought, if you want to consider it. And then, um, businesses operating outside of town are just prohibited from putting them in town. So, I guess the question is, would, do you, are you okay with that kind of language, or disagree with it, or want to change any of it, or discuss it?
Actually, this is a, it's a meeting environment for them. You had a chance for public comment, so we're gonna stick to the schedule so they can get the work done that they need to get done, or we're gonna be here all night long. We'll be glad to answer any questions for you tomorrow, though, if you'd like.
Okay.
I think for eligibility, that's pretty cut and dried, and I don't, I don't have any issue with any of those points, three ball points.
I like it too.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, number two, permitted number and duration. So this is, this is, like I said, just an idea uh, that I've seen in other, in other municipalities, and this is probably where a lot of your discussion's gonna come tonight. So as far as allowing the temporary signs, an idea is, um, that they can display one temporary sign per calendar quarter. So that would be four times per year, and the sign can remain up for thirty days for each of those, um, for each time they put those up. You can make that more, you can make that less. It's completely up to you. It's kind of a common, a common way of doing it without having a lot of clutter, um, visually on your street, your streetscapes. Um, it limits it somewhat. I know that there has also been discussion, and this can be now, or it could be after. I know there's also been discussion about allowing what's considered a temporary sign, like a banner, up on the building for an unlimited amount of time. And I want to tell you that when you, if you're contemplating that, you can't have it both ways. You, if it's going to be up on the building for an indefinite amount of time, then it's a permanent sign. Permanent signs are typically affixed to the building. They're made of wood or some other, some other material that is not temporary in nature. Temporary signs, a, a banner is a temporary sign, and, and any judge, prosecuting attorney, anybody like that, anybody coming into town, that's general. Nobody sees a banner as a permanent sign. So, if you're contemplating allowing somebody to have more visibility with signage, I would recommend, uh, I'm not an attorney, but I would recommend that you can allow them to have more signage, but you need to change your permanent sign, or per- permanent section of the sign code, meaning, um, just make it a permanent sign and give them eighty square feet instead of forty square feet. But it has to stay up, so it can't just keep coming up and down. That's, that's a temporary sign. So you can't have both, if that makes sense. So you can't put a temporary sign up on a building for an indefinite amount of time. Then it's no longer temporary. It's permanent.
And the thing that this comes into play with is the for sale or for lease signs that we were talking about that, well, I think the last meeting we talked that, that might have been a different.
Yeah, I think those are exempted, the for sale signs. I think they, they're under a different rule. Though they are exempted under this.
That's already in the sign code.
Yeah, that's already in the sign code. They are exempted.
That was the only one we were talking that went up to me to be up longer than a.
Right.
Temporary.
Yeah, and they're already, they're already exempted in the sign code.
Okay.
For sale signs and stuff like that, because they may be up for a while until something is.
There's already criteria in the code as to what those dimensions are.
Okay, so that still is separate. That's not getting bundled in this.
No, what, what we're talking about on temporary signs are banners.
Or.
Banner banners.
Yes, yeah, like, like a, a special, like a special that they're hosting, or, like Leeches, for example. He has his permanent sign right now. He has a banner up talking about the specials he has, and he has a feather banner that says, Mexicaner.
Now. I, I, so right now, the way our code reads, if I understand it correctly, is they're limited to thirty days. Our business owners want, don't want that limit. They want to be able to have a feather banner pretty much indefinitely. Um, that is.
Real quick, they are not allowed for thirty days. They're, they're prohibited in your current code.
Our, our current, oh, our current code is they're prohibited outright.
Period.
Okay. Okay, so the.
So at least this is giving some.
So the proposed.
This gives you a place.
The proposed was the, the yellow highlighted, is that correct? That's where I see the, um.
I think so.
The tie, the tie constraint on it. No more than two banners may be displayed in one thirty-day permit period. Um, and no more than four banner permits shall be issued. So, that's where, so, and it's, it's, so it's not in our current code, but it's in our proposed code, which we were trying to revamp and try and get in line with what, what keeps the integrity of our town rural, plus aids our business owners in attracting business.
And currently, all of those with feather banners, could Suzie could go out and say, hey, you're in violation of code, and start doing, going through those processes. So we are attempting to assist our businesses by saying, hey, let's find a compromise.
Yeah.
You can't have, we're not gonna say, keep saying no, but we need to not always say yes. There's gotta be, how can we come up with some give and take here?
So, yes, because it has been stated that, that, that is a great form of advertising for them, is what the business owners have said.
On the private flags?
But that, yes. So we need to consider that.
Well, and I'm also gonna tell you how many times as we go past, how, do we become blind to those items?
Oh, yeah.
Because they're up all the time. So. I agree, it helps businesses, but.
But we need to find.
It loses its effectiveness.
Says it's effective, it's constantly up, because no longer are we seeing it. We become blind to it. So, maybe say, hey, up, down, up, down, up, down. Yes, I know they're going to, it, as a business, you don't want signs to go up and down, but it's not a sign. It is a banner. It's temporary.
Meant to be that way.
It's meant to go up, down, up, down.
Right, so is this standard, you said across the state, typically the county? I mean, is this.
No. No, um, the, the first couple sections are pretty standard. This one is somewhat unique and kind of a, just trying to put something together for the town of Kiowa. A lot of small towns and even large towns don't allow the temporary signs at all. And I'm sorry, I don't know your names, but whoever's mentioned it does have a good point, and part of what this idea or this draft, um, considers is the fact that you do become blind to all the banners and all the signs that are up, when they're up all the time. You don't, I mean, you don't, you, you don't even notice them, and visitors aren't even gonna notice them. But when you're, when you have your business owners take them down from time to time, then put a new one up, like every quarter, it, it can be more than that if you want, um, then it does attract more visibility, and then, uh, you know, they'll change the color, or what, they could put up the same sign if they want, but people do notice there hasn't been a banner there, now there is one. What does it say? Or, you know, a, a sock, what we call sock flags, but they're feather banners as well. And then people do take notice. So that is in favor of the businesses as well, as far as, you know, not allowing them up on an indefinite basis, so.
It has been stated that it is a good business technique, does draw more attention, so I would like to find a balance between both, for, for the business sake.
What do you feel with the reasonable amount of time?
I'm not sure. I mean, that's.
Thirty days? Like thirty, I.
What?
Thirty days up, thirty days down.
But, and if we're going per quarter, then that, I mean, then that kind of gets funky and.
Forty-five days every quarter.
Forty-five days every quarter.
I like that.
Because you know what? If they're close, that sign can be down, and guess what? That's not part of their forty-five days.
Can they do five days up?
That gets hard for her to enforce. That's part of why she gave you this guideline, because
Okay.
now you're asking for either us or Suzie.
Keep track.
Keep track.
Yes.
I'll meet you.
Business and each sign, and.
Would anything about business hours help? Although some of the businesses are open more hours than the others.
We can't keep track of their business.
So is forty-five days per quarter difficult to enforce, or is that reasonable?
It's reasonable.
Yeah.
So here's my question. We've talked about having licensing for signage. And if we have a temporary sign, when they come in and ask for that licensing, can they specifically state? Again, it's trust but verify that they're going to have it in this forty-five days. They're going to have it these days. Pull it down these days. Again, it, it goes to that trust but verify, but they are telling us specifically what forty-five days. That way we go to kind of where we've been talking about, if they're open five days and down two days, open five days and so.
Would that change it?
Would that, because again, they're now writing out in that business signage agreement. This is what they're going to do. If they don't do that, then yeah, that is a violation of the agreement, the contract that they have agreed to, but then we're giving them also the ability to make some of those decisions. I don't, I'm just tossing it out there as.
The other thing is we could change the quarter to every six month, like.
Suzie's recent.
But I'm seeing, but then it could be thirty days on, thirty days off, thirty days on. I'm, I just feel like forty-five days on and forty-five days off can take advertising away from businesses.
Go ahead, Suzie.
I can see that. Yeah.
So I'm just gonna comment on the previous comments, and that is covered as we get further along, as far as the permits and that kind of stuff. And it'd probably be best if we discussed that part of it there. Um, to really stay fo, I want to help you resolve this, you know, maybe even tonight, who knows? But if we can stay focused on each little item, then I think we can make really good progress. And the permitting side of it is down further. So, I did address it.
Okay. I mean, I just feel like we've had feedback from businesses that it is effective, and I just don't want to take something that's a, I, I get our stance, and we, I completely.
Okay, so how, I also do want to be. So how about instead of saying thirty days within a calendar quarter?
So, as I say, it's effective. Are we getting the numbers that they're running that from the time that they put that banner up to the time they took it down, my numbers look like this before it, my numbers look like this while it's up, and then my numbers look like this after it's down? No, but the business owners that have shown up here have said it was effective for them.
I can't go off of hearsay. I can't go, I need to see numbers.
Keep in mind, too, it's just the ones that showed up here.
Right, and that's true.
There's, this is how all the banners are about, more businesses.
And there's more businesses that didn't show up.
Can I say something?
No, Monica, you can't, because they need to stay focused on the job, is that when you come to this meeting, you're a spectator, and we already went past public comments. So, if we.
If we go look at this, um, the recommendations that we emailed in, the second to the last one, temporary signs, um, it was suggested change thirty days to read sixty days, and change four times a year to once per year on temporary signs.
But that's even less.
That's less.
Yeah.
I don't.
Less.
But, um, perhaps sixty days per quarter, that's.
Is this gonna say that? Sixty days at, at their discretion.
Worked for six days.
At their discretion, and can you, they got sixty days allowed in that quarter, right? So they can do it one week, and then they can do it two days or whatever.
Whatever they. Two-thirds of the time.
Oh, hard or easy would that be to monitor?
A little more difficult. A little more difficult.
Especially if we're allowing it to break up into sections, like twenty, twenty.
I think it needs to be consecutive days. I think it needs to be sixty consecutive days and thirty consecutive days off. Um, otherwise, who's gonna count? You've got five here, you've got three here, you've got two here.
Yeah, I think that's.
We go, how many, how many days do you have to this quarter? Oh, I'm up to, I've, I've only had fifty-nine. I've got three more days.
Someone will break it down by hours.
Yeah.
With how many hours.
Yeah.
So, then.
Consecutive days.
Consecutive days per quart, per quarter. Okay, so that is sixty days more per quarter than they're allowed by current timeline.
And that's two-thirds of the time.
Yes.
Okay, so that's under number two, second bullet, we're changing that thirty to sixty. How do you feel about that, Suz?
Uh, I, I can enforce that, yes.
Alright.
Good deal. I, I.
So are we, are we deciding on this tonight, or?
We're gonna figure out if we're gonna decide on this.
But we have to change, it says sixty consecutive days.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just a draft.
Okay, yeah. Alright, we are.
Hey, how tall is a feather banner?
Anywhere from six to ten. So I just put the minimum on here. You know, when they start getting over the eaves of the building and as tall as the trees and that kinda stuff, number one, they're not as effective. And number two, they are, and and I apologize for using this word, but it's used widely, they are more unsightly. When they're really tall, so that's just a suggestion. You can make it whatever you want, they come in typically six, seven and a half, eight, nine and ten. Sizes, so if you wanna keep it simple for the business owners to just order one. Um, I would suggest putting a size in here that's easily attainable, so as opposed to, you know. Eight point three or something like that, so.
Up to ten.
And here's the thing, here's. And there are some places that a ten foot.
Oh, they're great.
Looks great, ten foot downtown.
I agree.
Might not be. Could do so, but then we're getting in the walkway. Yes, so so that, so think about all of that too, when we're talking about six foot, ten foot. You might say ten foot in here, guess what? Somebody who doesn't really have, you know, the right space for it, go and put a ten foot, it's gonna now be blocking in the way, they're gonna argue with Suz. Suzie is say, hey, but you said I could have a ten foot, and she's gonna say, but it's blocking the way, so gotta.
But we talked about the feed store being that's a larger property, we've talked about the smaller ones, the Mexican restaurant and. And also just peachy, like having more.
Right.
So I think we need to figure out how to way to accommodate.
Okay, so how about if we just say, how about if we just say eight foot? It splits the middle and we call it good.
So each business gets an eight foot.
Right, right now, we're not discussing that.
No, we're we're on foot, like.
How tall are we?
But it says it shall not exceed that footage, so they could have a smaller one.
They could choose to do a small.
But this way. Yes.
I like it.
I'm okay, I'm there.
Okay, uh, so the next one is geared more towards the banners, which is thirty square feet. And that you can put in there a specific size if you want them, you know, four by eight or something like that. If you want them more vertical, horizontal, but. Oftentimes, you know, the business owners really wanna choose what. What dimensions those are gonna be, so if you put in the square footage and they just stay within that. Then it's up to them to find the banner that meets their needs, so thirty was just a suggestion. So.
When I hear four by eight, I think thirty-two, so when I hit C thirty, that has me going, uh.
Let's go thirty, thirty-two.
Or I can say forty. And let and let the business.
Not exceed.
Not exceed.
And that that way a four by.
Forty, forty square feet.
For some reference, forty square feet is what's allowed for your permanent signs. So they could be as large as those permanent signs. If it's at forty square feet.
That would be then my concern.
I understand with that, I mean, it's 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 only gonna be for sixty days, it's just a banner.
Do the feather banners fit into this square footage?
No, there, no, this, no.
There are more than this footage?
No, there would be less.
There'd be less, cuz they're, they're not. Right, well, and and the summary thing, there is a banner, the last page has a banner chart. Um, that one of you supplied nicely, so you can. Like standard banner sizes are three by five, three by, three by ten, four by twelve, those are pretty standard. The backdrops, I mean, you're you're talking, I mean, that's eight by ten would be like this spot right here. Not quite, but.
See, I think thirty-two of four by eight, that's just in my.
I agree, it could also be a feather banner, it won't be tinier and taller.
Four by twelve is pretty big.
We'll stick with thirty-two square feet.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, as long as it accommodates a standard feather banner.
Which it would.
It would.
Cuz they're they're not, they're not as wide, they're usually.
Like that, right.
They're, yeah, they're.
They're like foots. Six by one, so they're.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're going with thirty-two.
Okay.
Alright, so the next one is, um. Kinda more just common sense stuff, just making sure that the signs don't obstruct, you know, pedestrian walkways and sidewalks and roadways and things like that. That really is kind of an obligation that the town should take on and make sure through me, but make sure that, you know, it doesn't interfere with any of that. So, and then obviously, oh, sorry.
Can people argue that?
They can, they can, but I'm prepared for that.
Obstruction.
Yeah.
I mean, that's easy to define.
But some of that's probably up to Suzie.
Well, and know that when when anybody thinks something's up to me, that. Because I've been doing this for so long, I've been in court for everything you can imagine. So I have standards, I know what judges and prosecuting attorneys and what they all think as well. And that's really where you want to be, is in line with them, so.
But I just, I'm trying to take the the disagreement in what an obstruction is.
Do we need to define what an obstruction is in our definitions?
No, I know, and here's why. Because you need, normally I would say you don't want things to be subjective, but you need that to be somewhat subjective. We need to make a determination without saying, well, it does, it it isn't sticking out two and a half feet, it's only sticking out two feet. No, it doesn't matter, it can't be sticking out at all over that, you know, right away, and I take pictures, I mean, I do a lot of right away. Um, impediment type of violations in all all over the place. And I, my photos show that it's a problem, so and if it's, if I, if I. Can see that it's just really not a problem, I'm not, I'm not going to cite somebody for that, because every single. Violation I address, I have to be prepared to go to court on. So that's always in the back of my mind, is a judge, is a judge gonna look at this and say, okay, come on Suzie, this is a little extreme? I don't, I don't want that for me and I don't want that for you, you know, so, yeah. So it has to be, it has to be some common sense in there, which I can bring for you, so.
This is about bushes over the sidewalk, that is an obstruction, so it's very clear. If it's in that space. So.
Right. Right.
Alright, next one.
Uh, that the signs can only be displayed on the private property of the business and can't extend beyond the boundaries of that. So they should stay on on their property.
Well, I have a question on that, um. With the little group place, what's the name of it? Um, if their feather banner is. On the street side of the sidewalk, that's, that's not their. That's not their property, it's public property, however, that's pretty much. The only location they can put it and you can get visibility.
Although, once we, once we redo eighty-six. That that will be better because they're gonna redo that whole thing and they will have extra, I mean.
Sidewalk that every brought out.
Right, the sidewalk's gonna be brought out like sixty.
Okay, okay.
And to be.
Yeah, that.
Fair across the board and is, you know, there can't be any sign in those areas. Whether it's about visibility or not, it has to be none. So otherwise, you take on that liability, cuz that signs in your right away and you're allowing it to be there, so. Yeah.
Okay, next one.
They may, they may be one who takes advantage of the eight feet. Instead of a six foot, if that helps them, you know, so. Okay, then the maintenance and the safety, this is pretty standard. Um, you know, they just need to be in good condition and not ripped up, looking bad, faded, things like that. Um, not supposed, they can't be causing a bunch of noise, flapping in the wind, yes, those. Feather banners do, but they're generally pretty quiet, sometimes you get people who have banners who. You know, the corner isn't secure and it's just flapping in the wind and the rope is whipping around and, you know, those, so it's just that kinda stuff that. Is under the maintenance and the safety, and then the, you know, the owner's responsible for taking it down. After the end of their, which will be sixty days. After the end of their sixty days. Any questions there?
Oh, no.
Um, and then, so this is where we get into the permit requirements, again, this is just an idea. Um, to, so that we're not over complicating things, not only for the town and staff, but also for the business owners. I did this to make it easy for everyone, um. So in this, in this draft, you would get an annual temporary sign permit, so once a year. You would go in and apply for your sign permit for the temporary business signs. And one per property or per establishment. On that permit, it will grant them. One temporary site, well, in this case, one sign per quarter, so in this case, it's gonna be one sign per sixty days. So it'll automatically do that for them. Um, one sign per property. And then the owner, instead of, so I I I'm gonna guess that the owners are not necessarily gonna be lo- wanna be locked into telling. The town at the beginning of every year, when they want their banners up or their temporary signs. That may come and go, they may have different things going on, so I I believe. You should probably let them make that determination as they need it. So I've put in here, and this can be to staff, this can be to me, it can be to both, but it's a simple thing for them to do. In order for them to have that flexibility, and that is just um to notify the town by email. When they plan on displaying their temporary sign in for how long. And we'll keep track of it. So it's not only good for the enforcement side of things, but it's easy for them as. For the business owners as well, if there's questions about, well, their banner's been up too long, I have, you know. Uh, documented proof on how long it's been up, or if somebody says, why isn't it down yet, I can say they've got sixteen more days. Or whatever, so, so it's good for documentation as well, um. And then I also have in here no fee for that particular permit. So for the permanent signs, I'm not sure what you charge for a fee for that, but for these temporary signs, maybe there's no fee for it.
Now, I did decide that.
Yeah.
We did discuss it.
But I I would like to say, I. I disagree with that just a little bit, and it could be nominal, but you have to remember, when I have to do all these, that takes part of my time.
Right.
And it takes supplies, I mean, you don't think about paper, the ink, all that stuff. So, I and it doesn't have to be crazy, I mean, when we talked to those business owners, they were okay with the idea of even a twenty-five dollar fee. On top of their business license, cuz that makes it an even hundred. It doesn't have, yeah, per year, it doesn't have to be that, but I just wanted to bring that up because. I have to spend all that extra time doing, doing these.
I think we had decided it would be part of, I I mean, at the last time we decided it should be part of their business license, but I.
But it kind of, yeah, it didn't, we didn't, yeah, anyway, I wanted to throw that out there. Because it does take me time to do all the extra paperwork.
But this is only for temporary, this has been addressing permanent.
Right, so their permanent signs, it's a one-time fee for a permanent sign.
One-time fee for permanent?
Yep.
Per year.
No, no, their permanent sign is a one-time fee ever.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying they're they're like Farmer State Bank, they paid a one-time fee for their sign. That's it.
Something you can do is, um, you know, you have, they have their business license at the beginning of the year and you put this, this, um. Application in some sort of packet with their business license, and if they wanna fill it out and. Do this, they're great, if they don't, they don't have to.
Right, and if they don't wanna have temporary signs, they wouldn't have to pay the extra because. I'm not gonna have to spend that extra time, it could be an extra piece.
Devil's advocate, say they take out their business licenses in January and they decide in April, they want temporary. Then they're gonna be on different calendar years and.
Now, and actually, I do, I do business licenses, April first, April first.
And you pro- but you prorate?
No.
No. Well, no, 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 what I'm saying is like, if they take out, well, I guess it doesn't matter if they, if they're not, do they need to come and renew their? Permanent, like annually?
Yes, cuz I send out the business renewal stuff.
And we, we can set. But they don't have to make, they don't have to pay another fee though, at that time, they just renew.
No, every year. For the business license.
There's, I thought you just said they don't, they only pay one time.
Or a permanent fine.
Gotcha.
Like Farmer State Bank. Yeah, so permanent, permanent sign is a one-time, if their business license get renewed every year, but so, so like I had someone, cuz. I'm still trying to catch everybody up, okay? So almost all the businesses turned in their business license application. By April first, like I requested, and I sent them out in like January.
Okay.
Hey, but I still had one come in the other day and goes, hey, I forgot to do this, I did not prorate it. Same fee, even though we just did it, it's gonna be good for six months.
And and I think we should do the, uh, temporary permits on that same timeline.
Yeah, I would, I would do it, I would do it.
Now that we all agree with charging for.
Well, that's your discussion, that's your discussion.
Yeah, I looked at our comments. Um, that that we all emailed in, and there's a couple of different suggestions here. One of them was um a fifty dollar for, well, and this was. When we were discussing adding it to a business license, so I think we're all agreed that it's gonna be a separate permit. And with an annual fee of either twenty, twenty-five, and uh, there's another suggestion in here. For a total uh permit fee of fifty dollars.
I think fifty is a little high.
And I think, I think when we were. Discussing that, we were allowing many more temporary.
Oh, we're good, we're good. We're good.
Yes, it did.
No, it's it's still recording.
I can hear you, I just can't see you.
Oh, she can, she can hear us, but she can't see us now, sorry, uh, oh. Okay, just the video kicked off. Are we good? Can you see us?
I can see you. Only.
Okay, hopefully all the TVs come back.
Um, if you want, if I can, I want to address. A s- a situation that I heard brought up, and it's a good one, and that is, let's say somebody. Decides they don't want, they don't need any temporary signs, so they don't. They don't uh fill out the permit on April fifteenth or whatever, you however you wanna do that. They can come in later and go ahead and fill it out, they still owe the twenty-five. But we would put them on wherever they're at in the quarter. If they're at the end and there's only thirty days left, then they only get their thirty days, but then the next month they get their sixty, so that's easily. Taken care of if there's a question, you know, a new business comes into town or or what have you, so that's, that's kind of an easy fix. On top of that, something we need to discuss really quick before we move on is with this. Now that I'm thinking about it, with the sixty days. Per quarter, you could potentially, and it's up to you if you want to allow this, you could potentially have somebody choose. You know, the last two months of a quarter, that's their sixty days, and the first two months of the next quarter, and then their sign is up for four months. So, do you want to require, and I can put this in here, do you wanna require a two-month? Uh, intervals where they're, they don't have their permit, so that really, or they don't have their sign up, so it really is, you know, two months on and two months off.
Now, I think.
Then the following quarter, they're gonna have.
They're gonna have the two months.
Four months with no sign. That's a, that's the business owner, if they feel, they feel they want a solid four months, I'm okay, I'm okay.
Because summer might be their hot time and winter not.
There you go, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just, that was one of those kinda unintended consequences. I wanted to clarify, just in case, so, okay, sounds good.
So now, I, are we okay with charging on a permit?
That's.
I yes.
I think.
Cuz time is valuable and.
If you have twenty-five dollars, it rounds that out to a hundred dollar flat fee.
Then I know that, if you, if you're just doing a business license, you don't wanna be. Also paying the price of a temporary sign that you're not gonna use also.
Correct, so they could choose, I mean, it could be on the permit, there could just be a little box, check here if you want to add.
A la carte.
Yeah. The sign permit. The sign permit.
Yeah.
And if they don't check it. Then it's only, I can change the business application.
I think twenty-five is reasonable.
It is reasonable, and.
For both business owners and time.
Yes, yes. And we've heard, and businesses said twenty-five dollars was reasonable, yeah. So. They spend a whole lot more on that than for the bigger first.
Yeah.
Yes, they're, they're kind of expensive.
Yes, they are.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good, I like that idea.
Okay, right, so twenty-five dollars. For a temporary sign. Or an annual temporary sign permit.
Yes.
Great. Okay. Um, down to prohibited signs, this is again gonna be somewhat just kind of common sense, I guess, and very standard. Um, across other municipalities, so flashing, rotating, animated, animated signs. You really need to prohibit them because they have been proven to cause accidents, not often, but they can. Or people can blame them. You know.
Uh, lovely wind signs that go, you know, have the.
With the arms?
No.
Okay.
We'll tell you.
Doesn't include that.
C dot prohibits these two.
So.
C dot permit to put a sign like this along eighty-six.
I do know that, found that out here, you know.
Now, if, if somebody was to, in your town, was, one of these businesses was to go get a permit from C dot to put up one of these. Flashing or rotating signs, your ordinance would supersede C dots. They're not allowed to do it.
So we prove it as well.
Okay.
But would that be a variance at that point? Or, or is it?
It depends on the, I mean, what's the.
Yeah, if it's. If. They would have to be approved by us for C dot to approve them, let's just.
But how do they get approved by us if we're saying they can't do it?
Well, that's what a variant costs therefore, so they can put in, they can put in a request for variance on anything.
Okay.
But. Just so they have to be approved, cuz the variance is.
I'm just gonna say that either. This is just my professional opinion and going the legal direction. There should never be a variance for these types of signs. You're just asking for liability issues if you do. There is no unique circumstance. Uh, for a business to have these, and variances are there for unique circumstances, something that they. Have or don't have that everybody else, that they're different in some way. And really, the, the flashing, rotating and animated part of it is for safety. Honestly, it's more for safety than it is for visual.
Yeah.
So. And then um, attention grabbing signs, I'll change that to signs instead of features. You know, searchlights, inflatable signs, so an inflatable sign. Had a lot of experience with these, but in some funny stories I won't go into, but you know, an inflatable sign could be a balloon type thing up on the roof. Um, which should never be allowed. Also, they include those uh, wavy men. Guys or animated things that are, that. That have air in them and they kind of shift in the wind with the air. Those are prohibited in most communities as well. So that's what we mean by inflatable signs is things like that. So including things like, you know, the big balloons on the big. Uh, you know, at, at the top, some sort of long.
Oh, like the car. Car lots will put giant balloons up or whatever.
Yeah, they sh- they, they have, a lot of car lots have, because of the inflatables are not allowed in a lot of towns, they've gone to those. Plastic type ones now, that have worked a lot better, but. And, and honestly, you know, the, the small little balloons like that probably wouldn't be a problem, but what ends up happening is you can get those very large balloons that you see over. Housing developments and things like that. And those have become problematic, because if they lose air. It, it's a big problem, so that's really what that's referring to as far as inflatable signs. Yeah. And then uh, you know, signs that obstruct visibility. That's, you know, I think we all know what that would be. It can be somewhat subjective, but. You know, I'll. I'll uh, you know, take care of that in the best interest of the town, of course, and the residents and the visitors. Um, and then signs outside the boundaries, no. Temporary business signs are permitted from the businesses that don't operate within the boundaries, except where a temporary permit's been granted. So.
Just kinda going back to number three, I would assume. The safety hazard would even be like people trying to cross the street, pedestrian traffic, so that would be covered in there.
Well, sorry, maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm not either. Well, I'm wondering, cuz we're like, signs that obstruct visibility for traffic creates confusion with traffic, presents a safety hazard, I'm thinking of people trying to. Cross a road open.
So you read obstructs visibility for. Uh, auto traffic or pedestrian.
Maybe, or.
I don't know.
It's always irritating me, but I'm not here on weekends and I'm not law enforcement. Um, Lions Club puts a big sandwich board in the middle of the highway. On their mornings of their pancake breakfast.
That's really.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Lions do a pancake breakfast. That is, that's a highway.
For the last fifty years.
Yes. When I think of something that. Is visually.
Impeding.
Impeding a, a traffic, something sitting in the middle of the highway that has nothing to do with directing traffic. Other to a panc- pancake breakfast is obstruction.
Where's the sign in?
In front of the Lions. On the Sundays where they have pancake breakfast, which is once a month.
Yes, I don't, that one's tough for me because.
But here's, here's my thing, and this is why people get mad at me. Just because it was done for fifty years doesn't mean it was done correctly.
And, and if we allow it for them, somebody else is gonna say, well, you allowed it for them, you set a precedent, I, you gotta allow it for me.
And really, that's something that Suzie can enforce, because it's on a state highway, and that needs to be being enforced by state patrol. And if it's not being enforced by state patrol. What do we do about it?
Yeah, I know this is gonna be, officers should put us on subject, I'm just gonna say it. I'm surprised that with our small town, that everybody gets to have a banner in front of their business. I don't know why we don't designate a spot, but in the town that says you get to rotate, you're, all the businesses there get to rotate advertising this. Once a month. It's your turn, okay, next one.
Like a sign at Elizabeth.
Yeah, cuz Patty, cuz Patty Anne's has a, Patty Anne's is on the Elizabeth sign.
Sorry.
That's right. Commodate that it's all state, it's not a roadway, and they will not permit it.
I know, I was, if we had a, a place in town, like it's one corner.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think everybody would like that, but they can't come up with something that. Is in compliance.
Yeah, yeah, cuz that's not ours.
Because I think that would be a great, and we've all agreed that that is a great thing, we just don't have a place.
Okay.
So I need to make you guys aware that I get warning. Notifications from our insurance company regarding certain weather events.
So is it, oh.
I'm getting a weather event from our insurance company that there's a thirty-minute hail alert. For three-quarter size inch hail.
Oh, just takes my help.
Near our municipality.
Finishing off, right.
I think I haven't replaced my roof yet.
I get my car in the garage. Giving you a heads up of that.
Okay. We're close to the end of here, so, we are close to the end here.
Alright, well, thank you.
Yes.
So number three. I'm gonna change as far as the visibility, I'm gonna change it to any sign that distracts visibility, comma, creates confusion. So it's gonna cover it.
Got it.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, okay. Got it. Alright.
Um, next, section five, enforcement, which is pretty standard, um, they have the right to inspect the sign for compliance. They, uh, homo- or homeowner, sorry, a business owner found in violation, um. Subject to removal of sign, potential revocation of their sign permit. That, of course, would be. You know, somebody who abuses this whole thing, and maybe, maybe the board or somebody decides that they don't get a permit the next year. In that permit, I'll help. I'll help um, Sasha put this together, but in that permit, it will say something like, it should say something like that on the bottom. That, you know, that they agree to. Uh, you know, if they've had to be warned or cited more than so many times a year or whatever, that you just don't let them do it anymore, you know? That's up to you, but. Um, that's it, really.
Rements on there that they have to sign off on.
Yeah.
You know. How they behave.
So as far as temporary signs, that's it, not that you've made your full decisions and stuff, but just remember that the. The sign that you want to allow on the building in addition to their permanent, is it, is a different discussion, whether that's now. Or later, has to be a different discussion, so.
Okay, well, what do you guys think about saying temporary? With our changes, this actually feels, sounds, looks.
I like it.
I like, I like it, but do we need to hear business comments?
They had a public.
They have a chance.
Comment, they had a.
Some inception.
Do that, and they didn't come and do it, so. And please keep in mind, you're given a recommendation of the town board, so there's another chance for them to come forward. And to have. Meetings on this, they.
Yeah, um, I agree.
Tonight is to get something in place to send to the town board, because just so you know. While this is sitting here lingering. That crap stays.
Yep.
Because there's no enforcement at all right now.
Yes, right.
I feel like, based on past comments, like, I feel like we've. Addressed that, so I'm.
Trying to make the best of.
I like this, I said we push it forward.
And that's defamation of character of our town.
Well, actually, Suzie, you wanna speak to that, cuz we had a conversation about that today, and as uncomfortable and as irritating as that is. In today's society, that is protected, well, Suzie said that actually is not protective speech, but. You wanna speak to that? We had today?
Yes, so. You cannot enforce signage based on content.
Right.
So you, if somebody wants to put. You know, something derogatory up as part of their temporary sign, they can. All we can enforce is the objective standards. Of what you adopt, size, placement, duration, time, you know, all of those kinds of things. But when it comes to somebody complaining about a particular sign. Then we have to let it go. So the sign, I think that, that Kim's referring to. Should be cited, you know, it's too big, it's temporary, but the, what it says. Is not enforceable, so they're allowed to say what they want to. So.
That sign is up. So by their property.
By size perspective, um, by a temporary. Status of it, that's enforceable.
Cuz she didn't.
What's on it is.
They didn't pay a permit fee.
And it's over the thirty-two square feet.
Right.
They can still hear you.
Okay, hold on. Gotta, gotta get the uh. Gotta get the owl back, hold on.
Then we can take that, you guys can get this to the floor, okay?
I like.
I'm, I am, yeah, well, we gotta wait till we come back online?
Uh, well, you are the only, the only, it's still recording, it's just, um.
Not on TV, but also.
Yeah.
You know. She said that. Sign language is a different conversation, it doesn't mean it's a different night, it just means.
This is only temporary.
You're only discussing temporary, right, the second, so she gave you. Um, options for how to change the verbiage in the permanent one, or add to it, you know, so that you're covering. Yourself with the options they have for. Permanent sign.
Um, you mean definition?
Cuz we really. Yeah, what she was talking about, Suzie, what I was saying was, you said that this conversation was exclusive to temporary signs, that. Changing the verbiage regarding permanent signs is a different conversation. You're not saying that's a different night, you're just saying that's a separate conversation from what we're just saying. And to give them again what. You discussed as far as recommendations in changing that permanent sign, code language. To work for.
So. I know you discussed allowing business owners to have. What would be under definition, not only in your town, but across the country, a temporary sign, if it's a banner or something like that. You discussed allowing them to leave it up on the building indefinitely. That is not a temporary sign, that's a permanent sign. So you can't have it both ways. I know the residents would love to do it that way, but they can't, or the business owners, but they can't have it both ways. You have to decide, do you wanna just allow them to have more signage on the building, more permanent signage? Or not, but they can't put a temporary sign up indefinitely. It's just, I mean.
Indefinitely, or?
They said they wanted it.
They said they wanted it up.
Well, weren't they talking more like feather banners, though?
They're talking banners and feather banners, a discussion we had at the workshop ultimately ended up with. Making the addition to the business license, where they chose during. The application for renewal of the business license, either a feather banner or a banner. Would, would be in addition to their permanent fixture already, signage, that they kept all year long. And were tasked with maintaining the condition of it, so. When we talked about that today, it made sense what Suzie was saying, if they have to take it down to replace it continuously, because the condition of it weathers. That again, by definition is temporary.
And after sixty days, it's gonna, it's probably gonna be a little warm.
Yes.
So.
That's where that conversation came in, and you know. When we were going back over your workshop you had, and the stuff that was talked about, your responses. She said there's no way, you can't, there's no way to change that, what you're doing is changing a definition. That's a universal definition to accommodate a handful of people that are wanting the ability to do that. And that's kinda hard to do, and she can't enforce to that.
I agree, I felt like we were only talking about the for sale or lease signs, like being up there, but we were talking. I mean, we were talking about people putting special signs up, and I, or like the special of the day. But we also, that goes up and down as specials change.
Correct.
Right.
So that's why she's saying with these temporary signs. They have the ability, they don't have to come up with the dates of those specials, when they fill out the application. They could pay for it at the application, and then when they decide they have the specials. Let Sasha know that they're putting it out, so then they get their sixty consecutive days of the special, if they need the sixty consecutive days of a special.
That does make me think, as the road gets redone, what, where does a sandwich board fit, you know, like a lot of places in Castle Rock?
When their road is redone, they will only have the capability of putting that on their designated property line, anything outside of that is the town.
Okay.
Right.
And that's reasonable, I mean. There will be.
That's normal, that's standard.
That's. Not, no, but in, within our town, in the way it's gonna be, they will have room to put that, like some of their property will be out there.
Some of it will be out there, but as I discussed with Suzie, if I'm looking ahead, I'm anticipating. Because that's what I do, I expect the worst and pleasantly surprised if it doesn't happen that way, but. They're gonna extend those sidewalks out fifteen feet, and they will probably have trees. In your town center. At that road edge there, okay? I expect argument, um, that now there's trees, and what we're trying to put up in our property lines. Is probably blocked, or whatever the reasoning is, and they're gonna wanna put it out by the road and by the tree.
By the trees.
Which is in.
So they need, the sandwich boards will be.
Well, they could.
They could.
They could, I don't know what C dot's gonna take on a few things right now. You know, I know what our, our filing procedures are right now with C dot. With four lanes. They plow to the center and then they come in and clean that up, but now we're up two lanes, so in a stormy rain, so are they plowing to the outside? And on the sidewalks, and are we, I don't know what any of that looks like yet, right now. So there's still some unknowns that we've gotta work through, um. But I'm looking ahead based off the interaction we've had with people to date.
Mm-hmm.
The feedback you've all received, um, to date. And I'm just anticipating. That could be a problem, and that's something Suzie will deal with, but you know, like. With Patty Anne's, who took the initiative themselves to drill a hole in the town sidewalks. And plant that in a hole with cement in town right away.
But, but. The sidewalk, they were redoing their sidewalk, and I mean, I, I know, I, well, yes, I know, but I.
There's no excuse for that.
And, and we'll get this listening.
Yes, so. I like this. It's clear. It's defined. There's no. To me, this is me and I'm not in Susie's position. I'm not in your position. And I'm sorry for that, but, um, there's no. Openness for interpretation of what you're putting in there, I know what you said, but I read it this way, so. I want it this way because it benefits me this way.
Right, and we need it and.
That's not what matters.
We need the backup for you guys and Susie, but I also wanna make sure that we're. Are, we're supporting our business owners, we all agree, we've always all agreed with that.
What I think what you're saying is we need structure.
We need structure and we need structure where somebody can't come in here and say, I know what you said. But I don't think there should be anything, I think if your definition of supporting us. Is you do what we were asking you to do.
Right.
You're, you're doing what we want you to do.
Right.
That benefits us and. That's not, uh, that's not community.
Consistent, and that's not consistency where you can enforce things.
No, and there's support in your businesses, but then you need to remember, you've got an entire community.
And not be held liable as a town.
Right, so there's a lot of variables there and it's a hard conversation and it's hard decisions to make.
I think if I.
This is a.
If I might say bring some perspective.
Yeah.
Would based on what you've, uh. I mean, I can say decided, but based on what you've discussed tonight, they get two hundred and forty days out of the year with a temporary sign. That's a lot. I mean, it's almost indefinitely, so.
Like to wait, allow them, because they have stated that that is a good advertising form, and so I, but I feel like we've done a nice balance between.
Yes.
Being to do the town and support the business, and in fact.
And that's what your goal is.
More the business way, and so I feel like we've addressed.
So now adopting this, doesn't this just take care of the whole permanent sign?
That takes care of the temporary.
Because in here.
temporary signs and that's what Susie's speaking to.
It gives you a definition.
Definition.
But. You're not changing these. Go ahead, Susie, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Kim.
No, he's asking, um. If this change is permanent, we're just clarifying that you're, they're speaking to the temporary with what you've given them. And that the discussion we had with changing that language for the permanent, it doesn't require a whole. Restructuring of permanent, it's gonna be adding a sentence or two.
Yeah, cause the permanent signs are already pretty structured about how big they can be, where they can be placed. Uh, cause they can't be within so many feet of C dot.
And the business owners haven't stated that they have a concern about permanent.
No, just the temporary. Cause they all pretty much have one.
Yeah, but what Susie's trying to say is their proposal and what they're. Wanting to do or feeling entitled to do is. Use a temporary sign as a permanent sign and by definition, they can't do that, so what she's trying to do is find a balance that. What they're asking to do is a permanent sign, so in order. To have something that is there on a daily basis for three hundred sixty five days a year. It has to be considered a permanent sign, but what we're willing to do is make, um, a. Suggestion that you can either have a, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I missed this part of this conversation, I'm just going off what you and I discussed earlier, a forty. Square foot sign or a eighty square foot sign. Now they're having two options, is that, that's the discussion we had, is that correct, Susie?
For permanent?
Permanent, okay. Because if they had a, they have their regular forty foot square sign, okay, like farmers has out there, okay, or any of the others. Okay, and they add another. Forty temporary, permanent, forty foot, then, you know.
A lot of feet.
That's a lot of feet.
It's a lot of feet.
One, something to consider is with that is, you know, you have.
Looking.
A lot of fun character down Main Street in Kiowa and you have some interesting facades and stuff. And, um, you know, something to consider is how much of that do you wanna cover up with signage? So, you know, it might even be something like you change it instead of forty and forty, instead it's thirty and thirty. You know, uh, or something like that, maybe a little bit smaller, but.
Yeah, every building is unique though, I mean, and I hate to, like, we got some tiny little buildings that. That would be a lot on and big properties, that would be really little on, so.
She's speaking, and that's what I said to her when she suggested either two forties or one eighty, cause what seemingly their. Their goal is by conversation is to be noticed.
Yeah.
So they're wanting the colorful flamboyant. Feather banners or another banner that is to go in addition to their permanent signage that they already have for their businesses. Well then, get a bigger sign that has more color or more traction to it.
It's, I think we're just so unique because we have a state highway being our main street too. The buildings, it's hard to get, you know, people are going forty miles an hour through.
Well, and changing those lanes and everything, it's gonna help a ton.
So something I've suggested to the Main Street Board, just so you guys know, I thought I had a novel idea, CML conference in Brett a couple of weeks ago and. You're going through Frisco and you're going through Brett and they have their businesses are set up like our town center, they're real close together. You're going down a two lane road, which is gonna eventually be and you know, you're not looking over there, you're looking at the cars of people walking around.
Exactly.
So, but they're, all of their businesses have signs, here's the face of the business that stick out this way.
That's what I think we.
Okay, so I thought, cause I guess I didn't pay much attention, I thought the problem they're having is because. They don't have signage like that, and then I come back to town and I'm like, the heck, man, they do have signs like that. They do sit out where traffic coming both ways can see them sticking out like that off the building.
I think it's the, the changes in the highway are gonna help.
I think they'll help.
But you've got two people and now you've got everybody avoiding the middle lanes. Because of the potholes and going fifty down the right lanes and trying to speed in front of everybody and pass everybody, so it's. It's.
Yeah, they won't have that ability.
Situation right now and you don't have the opportunity, you're just looking to, and people trying to cross the road. So you're trying to look for all of this and that, that is hard for our businesses.
Well, and so my suggestion to the Main Street Board, that maybe one of their first projects that they decide to try to undergo. There are some that have those signs, some of them don't, Leeches doesn't have one like that. Maybe their first project is doing a sign project where we find money.
And grant money.
And grant money and we, or Main Street sponsors. Getting signs like that for all the businesses going downtown center. That way they're all uniform, they're all the same size, they're all eye catching, figure, I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah.
But create a sign project as a Main Street project.
Love that idea.
We find money for, and then all of them get these signs that benefit us.
And it'd be uniform, it would like.
It would, you know, and it would fit with the aesthetics of our small rural community.
Yeah.
So they were open to that, they're just getting started, but that was a suggestion based, and I sent a picture of Frisco and, and Brett. You know.
And what we're, and what we're gonna work ourselves into, including permanent, will allow for that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, cause it's a, it's a maximum, like when we're talking the size, it's kinda like this, it's a maximum size.
And they can go perpendicular.
Yeah, and I think Main Street heading that up, there are other business owners, so all of them coming together. Take us out of the equation and I've asked for that, just so you know.
Mm-hmm.
I want the town removed from the Main Street. They are talking about trying to find a way to go nonprofit, perfect.
That's a great organization, cause I've been to some of those meetings and there's a lot of resources and ideas that the state does.
But we just work alongside them and help them find the funding for it, so. So just so you know that, that's a suggestion I've given them, so maybe sometime down the road, that will be accomplished, but if this gets a temporary. Resolution or, um. Well, raising rooms for right now.
Exactly.
Then that's what we're looking for.
I agree.
Getting back to the permanent signs, I think two forty square feet is too much. I agree, generous, um. What, what is our current permanent allowance of thirty square foot or one forty square?
One forty. Mm-hmm, that's the max size.
And farmers is that example right now?
Yes, probably, yes.
Forty square foot.
Yeah, they didn't need a variance, so they must, their sign must be.
To code.
So, so the banners cannot be considered permanent signs. I, I, they need to be temporary, they need to fall under the. Sixty day, they need to fall under thirty two square feet, not to exceed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, and if you put it on your building, it's still temporary, you cannot leave it, so I. I don't think we should make an allowance for an indefinite banner on a building.
Correct.
Except for the for lease or for sale.
Right, which is, which is not, it's, which is a totally different thing, it, it doesn't even fall under this, it has its own space. Yeah, it has its own space in the code, so.
Okay.
So. Know.
Go ahead.
Real quick, know that even though those signs get to stay up for a long period of time, they don't get to look terrible. So I do notify those owners when they look pretty bad, that they need to replace it too, so.
And they're, and that's covered.
Right, yeah, yeah, but they're, they have their own little spot in the code that we're not touching.
Okay.
Yeah, this doesn't touch that at all, but.
Okay, um. Okay, so we've talked about temporary. I think with the diff- different changes that we've talked about, this is. I think it's a good one.
I think it's fair.
Yes.
Um, for both sides.
Something that allows the temporary that isn't allowed currently. So we're helping give that definition, we're finding again that balance, um.
And can be.
Enforceable.
Or supply.
Yes.
Everybody and it's easy to understand.
Yes, so. Ideally, I'm gonna ask, are we looking? To put, uh, can we send a permanent sign code separate from? Or I'm sorry, a temporary sign code separate from a permanent sign code to the board, or do we wanna put it all together?
I think we would type that up as a memo of recommendation on what you're recommending for temporary signs.
Okay.
And then what you're recommending, uh, revision to the language of the permanent signs.
Okay.
Um, and then I would have group draft and ordinance to that effect.
Okay.
That would go to the board.
Okay, so. Basically, that forty foot sign permanent, we've all kind of are good with that. And we're good with something similar to pretty much what we've gone through.
All the notes we've taken.
With all the notes we've taken. So do I have a motion? To let them put stuff together? With this is our guideline to send to the board of, or the town boards.
My motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we got temporary signs taken care of. Yeah. Do you have an idea of what you want your permanent sign language to sound, you guys are still throwing around? Two forties are too, too much, um.
Cause it's, no, they, they think they decided on one forty, they're gonna keep that.
One forty period.
Does that, does that fit for like the feed store and?
I mean, if it fits for the bank, it can fit for the. So, it's for feet, what they have in place at this time stays in place.
Right.
There'd be no revision to that because it means, that's what the code currently calls for.
I just wanna make sure that it, we have such, so many different kinds of properties.
Right.
That people, you know, are not.
Right.
No matter what we, somebody's gonna be on half.
I agree, but I, I, I think we, as long as we can consider everything and I like, I think that's a good example, cause they have a big lot. And you can see they're signed well from the road. I think Susie was gonna say something.
Susie, oh, I'm just, I'm just looking at, uh, the feed store now. And they have their forty, they have, it looks like they're forty, well, they, they have a. They have a pole sign as well, so they've got a couple, they've got some pretty big signage out there. The one on the building isn't overly huge, but they've got the big pole sign that's right there at their gate. That's even bigger and they, because they're on two frontages, they're allowed. Two forty foot, forty square foot sides, one on each face of the building. For those.
And what's there now?
One per frontage.
I would say what's there now, I don't know. How long it's been there and what permissions they got back when they put that store in, well, exactly, so that's.
It looks like it's, or it looks like it's forty, maybe even less, to be honest with you, I'm just looking at. Their street view here. Um, maybe even less, but the sign, the, the entry sign is there and it's bigger. Has their name on it, you know, we have compost, they are able to change that out. All of that, that, that gets more attention than anything.
Yeah, and I think the only thing that came into conversation regarding the feed store was the coffee. Food trucks need to be able, feather banners at the roadway, there's two or three of them at the roadway.
Two.
Two, okay, so that's the only conversation.
Yeah, but that, but that food truck is a separate business, so.
So shouldn't they be paying a permit for those feather banners?
After we pass.
After we pass this, yes.
Was there another language in our permanent sign code that needs to be addressed right now? No, the thing that was critical to me and that I am constantly battling. Uh, Susie, um, hit on that when she made the, um, distinction between. Local businesses and people that don't have a business here, um, by not having a business life.
Correct, okay.
Uh, because. And those are automatically violated because they're putting them in the town's right of ways.
Right.
And on sign, and they're putting them on the electrical poles, on the stop signs, so. I mean, those are clear, that are violations and, but that's not, there's a language regarding that in there's our current sign code. So we don't need to address that. You don't need it. Already there. It's already there and she hit on it here too, but you know, making it clear, and so one of the things I brought to her today was, okay, well. And sometimes I have to have the conversation to talk it out, to reason it. I said, right now, like we get hit with all this hail and we have all these roofing companies coming in, all these contractors coming in and making repairs. And they're putting their signs up in people's yards. And their businesses, but then I realized. She's making them do a temporary business permit that's good for a year, if they're coming in this town and doing any kind of business. They at least have a business permit for a year, so. If they're putting their business sign up in somebody's front yard, they're covered, cause they got a business license here to conduct that work in this town.
But I think though, we said some were going up in yards that were not allowed and we took care of that, right, like permission, like we. We've addressed that, that they can't put it up in.
They can't put it up in other people's yards, yeah, not arbitrarily. They can't go to somebody's yard and put us there, so when they get home, they see their sign there and say, call us. Leave the business card on the door, don't put your sign up in their front yard. And in the interest of not spending the night here, is there anything else?
Yes.
Permanent sign code language that we need to specifically address.
I do not believe so, no.
Okay, we didn't get home till eleven last night.
Yeah, last night I still love that.
So real quick, the food truck in the feed store, are we? If they're a separate business, do they get a permanent sign somewhere? And if so, do they?
They could have one at the roadway if they so choose.
But the feather banner would need to go up and down, up and down.
And they would have to follow this.
And by their own admission, which I haven't seen it happen yet, but by their own admission, when they're closed, on the days they're closed.
They don't have it up.
They don't have it up.
Correct, they only put it up when they're there.
Yeah, okay, so I just wanna make sure we're kind of hitting all the different types of businesses.
Yep, yeah, and they're, they're probably like the only one that that really affects is that coffee truck.
But it could be more.
Could be, but at this time, they're the only one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, but from here on out, then, then food trucks come in. You're gonna pay. Yeah, it's, it's only fair, I mean, you know, they can't come in and not have to pay, but everybody else has to.
Well, and all the food trucks though have to get a license to me.
Yeah.
So.
It's fair and it's structure.
I make everybody get a license.
So, we've gone through this.
Yes.
Any new business? Any discussions?
You're, you would be the discussion.
Yep, they're always mad at me and they left, so there's no discussion out here.
There's the power out.
I move, we adjourn.
If you, are you going to keep your position?
Oh, yeah. I would like to.
So there has to be, you have to have a formal motion to accept your resignation from that position.
Okay.
Cause you're not going.
Cause you're not leaving.
Oh, I know that.
But you, so there has to be a motion to, for you to resign that position. And then there will have to be, oh.
I moved that Todd gets out of his position.
The co-chair position.
Co-chair position. As we move from the co-chair remains a.
Board member.
Planning commissioner.
Person, yeah. Planning commissioner.
So I can stop hearing about it.
So someone has to second it.
A second it.
Okay.
You guys are so.
I. We need an appoint.
No, hold on, hold on, okay, so we voted on that one, so that motion carries, okay, now someone has to make a formal.
Motion.
Motion nomination for someone else.
I firmly nominate Julie. Planning co-chair person along with Wendy, along with Wendy Frenzel, who planning chairperson. A second motion.
All right, we have a motion at a second. All those in favors?
That passes five to zero.
You know the routine.
And stuff, there are many, many, many.
All right, so. New business discussion adjourned, it is seven thirty-four, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I second.
All in favor? Thank you, Suzie, very.
You're welcome. It's it's been a pleasure, it's been a pleasure working with you, so, yeah.